Opening of Planning Board Meeting Thursday, February 13th, 2025. It's a Zoom meeting. Um, we have an agenda. And we're going to go to item number one, Board Business Minutes of Prior Meetings, January 9th, 2025. Does anyone have any comments? Would anyone like to?
Uh, just one, one thing. You might want to turn the speakers off on your laptop because I think it's echoing back through.
I can't imagine my speaker are on. That's the whole problem. I can't get the.
You're not getting audio from your, from your, we're getting a loopback from somebody.
Uh, might be me. You know what? Maran, it will be, I'll be there in two minutes. Sorry, guys. Sorry, guys.
See you in a moment. Okay, um, I would suggest a three-minute break.
Comes in it. Anyway, whatever. Um, okay, so we were at the mini minute meeting, uh, minute.
Meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes. Do I have, well, no, Daryl, you had a comment. No. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the minutes from January 9th?
So moved.
Second?
It helps to turn your audio on. Motion to accept the minutes from 20, January 9th, 2025.
Okay, that will be a second. And, uh, all in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. Bartlett?
Bartlett, yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Minutes are accepted. Uh, Maran, you have some bills you need to present to us.
Um, yes, we had, uh, two bills, uh, for the planning board. There you go. Um, one was, uh, for the legal ad for the Lowell Sun for publishing the marijuana zoning by law amendment. Amount is six, six, eight, ninety-seven, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. And the second is to WB Mason for a new received stamp for planning. Turns out they're only good for about 10 years and, uh, mine would not stamp 2025.
Couldn't you just handwrite it? Um, what do you want us to do?
Um, so if the board, um, would vote to approve those two bills, um, so six, sixty-eight, ninety-seven for the Lowell Sun and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents for WB Mason.
Uh, does anyone have any comments? Uh, no comments forthcoming. Um, I, how do you want to do that? Do we do it as a vote?
Yeah, do it as a vote and not just, um.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the two bills as read, six, sixty-eight, ninety-seven, and eighty-nine, eighty-five.
Second.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Um, there's one, uh, piece of business that isn't on here that I want to bring up, and that's the, have you all had a chance to look at the Littleton Planning Board annual report, draft annual report?
I sent that to Chair or Vice Chair.
Okay, then, never mind. Um, Maran and Cooper have prepared a, um, what would you call it? Annual summary, annual summary of our efforts. Um, and, uh, there's even pictures of us on it. Um, so can we, I, I had no comments about it. Can we, uh, distribute it to everyone and for comment? Okay. Um, the ethics training, have you all received your notices and, uh, done it? Or at least have you all received notices? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any member input?
Um, I have a question. I don't know if it's relevant or not. A while ago, we approved a, um, industrial building on Spectacle Pond Road next to the Stone Yard.
Yes.
And I last, when I've driven past there, I've seen that the foundation is in, there's a slab poured last time I looked. But the building is in the, in a different place and in a different orientation from the plan that I remember approving. So I'm just wondering if that, um, having it turned right angles and set farther back in the lot is an issue for us.
It's interesting. I don't know what to say. I know that they were delayed in their construction because they were not allowed to connect to water because Spectacle Pond had been recently paved. Uh, they worked through that. Um, I don't know. Uh, it's something for the building commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
So let's refer that to him. All right. Anything else? Um, do we have any, uh, member of the public on? Is Steve Davis? Yeah. Do we have any, um, public input? Not having any public input. Um, we'll go to uh, item number two, 531 King Street Site Plan Modification. This is the small white, uh, office building that's behind El Forno. Um, it's, uh, been sold and will become a, uh, veterinary care, uh, facility. And they have applied for a, what they're calling a site plan modification. Um, the application appears to be in order.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Apparently there was some initial wobbliness and now it's fine.
Right. There was a communication issue with the permitting, um, representative. Um, but we've certainly worked through that and we have all the information that we needed, um, to move forward with the site plan review. Um, there were no substantive comments from, um, other departments. Um, it was a, uh, if you recall, the site, um, used to be, I, I don't remember, was six or eight, um, office, uh, office condos, um, and it's a simple change of use. Um, no on-the-ground changes are proposed. Um, Deb Sapienza is available for any questions.
The, um, the, you know, in site plan review, we mainly go over, you know, parking, screening, lighting. I, I do want to mention that, you know, this isn't a hearing. I am not a director butter, but I am, I mean, I, I'm, I, I don't know if I'm within 300 feet, but I can see the building for my property. Uh, so I'm very familiar with it. And I had the occasion to speak to my neighbor who is the director butter. And, um, their only concern is lighting. Right now, there are security lights in the back of the building that are just glaring security lights and, uh, that probably don't meet our current bylaw. But that was the only thing that was brought up, um, from the neighbor most affected. And that, and lighting is definitely under our site plan review.
You want me to comment on the lighting? Is that, when, like, when do I, like, I just don't, this is new to me, talking at a meeting like this. So let me know when you want input from me.
Yeah, and then to introduce, this is Deb Sapienza. She's representing, um, the, the Veterinary Care Center that's looking to locate here.
Hi, it's nice to meet all of you.
Nice to meet you. Uh, I'll open it to the board. Uh, Daryl, do you have any comments?
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I, I looked over the, the, um, piece there, and I think the only thing I have a question about with the change of use is since there'll be pets, uh, there, I understand it is for cancer care. It's not a pet, you know, area, but there's going to be pet waste and medical waste from the things there, and I don't know where that's addressed uh, in here. I don't see like where, uh, dumpsters are and whether there's separate dumpsters for annual waste. And then I assume any medical waste would be stored inside until disposed, but could you address that, please?
Um, yeah, so all medical waste is, um, because it's chemotherapy in particular, it very, it's stored in specially, you know, designed bins and that's removed by a waste, a medical waste service periodically. Um, so the medical waste should never, is not going to be in the general trash. Um, pet waste, I mean, that's, so we're, we're an outpatient facility. Um, you know, no pets stay with us. People are in and out our door. Most people, you know, about within an hour, they come for their treatment and they leave. So there will be some waste, but that will be, you know, there'll be pet, outdoors, there'll be, you know, pet pickup areas, like pet waste stations. And we will just be, you know, bagging that and putting it in the, in the, in the trash.
But I don't see where the dumpsters are in this plan.
Say it again?
I don't, I don't see where the, the dumpsters slash waste, you know, storage area is.
Well, the medical waste is inside.
Yeah, no, the medical, but the exterior waste, and then if you're putting, uh, pet waste in the external containers, uh, I, I don't see where those are on the plan.
Sure. I don't, I don't know that they are on the plan. Um, I'm, I think I was going to work with our, whichever, I mean, we're, we're about, you know, six months out from probably being on the property. So I was going to work with whoever our trash company was that we were going to be, um, you know, engaging to, to remove trash where they thought dumpsters, dumpsters would be good on the property. Um, and I don't know what would be easiest for them. Um, currently we have one waste bin that's maybe about, how many gallons is that? Like an eight-gallon bin?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, you know. Well, it's like, it's like, you know, a dog waste, but you might see it at a park. And we currently are emptying that once every, like, that, that, that about every gets, we don't let it go that long, but it would probably get full in about three months. So we don't have a lot of waste, um, because we truly don't have inpatients. So it's minimal. Um, but you're right, there is, there's no, we don't yet know where on the property the dumpster is going to go because I just, I haven't engaged with that, with whoever's going to be removing it.
Yeah, so my underlying concern is, is, and I, I, I understand that it's, you're not a, you're not a day, dog daycare facility or anything like that, but there will be waste and I want to just make sure that that's properly addressed and in some types of containers that it, you know, minimize the odors and not be less necessarily left on site for extended periods of time for, uh, odors. Because I feel that will have an impact upon the neighbors. Uh.
Agreed. I mean, I definitely agree with you. Yeah, but we wouldn't want that either. We wouldn't want that for our clients to have to be subjected to that. We wouldn't want the neighbors to be subjected, subjected to that. So, you know, we would work very hard.
Yeah.
It'll be difficult. Yeah, we would definitely.
If you're going to just make sure that that's addressed.
Yes.
Uh, you know, uh, uh, there so that we don't have a, an issue in the future.
I, I, Daryl, I think that's, uh, an excellent concern. And, uh, while, you know, there, there will be two, you know, part of the building will not be occupied by this. They will have to have a dumpster. There are just general, you know, there's, you, you need a dumpster location. And I think from the point of view of abutting residences, you should work to locate the dumpster away from the residential areas, which would be toward the CVS end of the property and, uh, El Forno parking lot into the property.
Yeah, we would, we would have no problem, you know, starting with.
I, I don't think you would have a problem either. And I think that if you could locate that on the site plan, that would um, allay our concerns. Um, anyone else? Bartlett, Anna?
Is, is, is the building connected or will it be connected to the town sewer?
Um, that is something that, um, we understand the sewer is going through there. Um, if that's an option, we probably would do that.
Okay, yeah, with the sewer capacity, I don't know if it is or not. I did, I just was asking if there's any plans to connect it.
Right. And just to let you know, as a commercial site, um, it will be required to connect once that, um, capacity, well, once the sewer is available on that line. So that will be.
Yeah, we were, we were aware of that was, we were that.
Great.
Yeah.
So my only question, um, Deb, uh, thank you for being here this evening is,
Thank you.
Given the, the business is pet-related and, and if there are, um, animals who are sick, uh, will there be any sort of loud noise that could perhaps disrupt the business next door? Um, because we don't know what the business next door is and, and whether or not compatibility of businesses, um, i- i- is there so that the abutting business is, is not going to, is not going to have their business impacted?
Sure. Um, no, you know, so you mean the business that's actually in the building with us or like our renter or do you mean like the, like the CVS in El Forno? Like which businesses?
No, well, you, you, you refer on the plan to adjacent tenants.
Right.
Okay, um, so, no, I mean, you know, dogs sometimes bark. I think our dogs, um, you know, we're in an office building right now in Acton where we have certainly neighbors. Um, I think they could speak to the fact that we're very quiet. Our clients are very mindful. This is the nature of the clients we have. They're very mindful of their pets. Um, we minimize stress when pets are with us. We don't leave them in cages. We, they've, a lot of them are older patients. They're dealing with cancer. Um, they're, I mean, they're sick in the sense they have cancer, but they're not ailing. Like they're not, they, they just are coming in for chemotherapy treatments. Um, so it's not a, when you think of a veterinary hospital, I think you think of a lot of barking, a lot of commotion, and that's kind of not what we are. I mean, we're very, it's a very kind of a calm environment, a very settled environment. I will also say our patients have to be very, very still for their treatments. So some of the more excitable dogs come in on sedatives. So many of our patients might be sedated also. So it's not a very loud veterinary business. Yeah, you know, we, we are currently right now, we have a financial planner right across the hall from us. And we have a great relationship with him. And I, I think, um, if you, if you wanted, you know, if you, if you're worried about us, you know, kind of being disruptive to neighboring businesses, I'm sure he would be happy to weigh in and help support the fact that we're very mindful, pretty quiet. Um, that's not to say that occasionally a dog doesn't, you know, bark or, or make some noise, but it's not, nothing ongoing and nothing disruptive.
All right. Thank you for your response.
So Deb, I, I want to reiterate the, um, you know, the neighbor concern about the security lights that are on the back of the building.
Yeah, please, yeah, thank you. Um, I, I want to get back, my partner actually.
Not, not the issue of having lights. It's that they're not night sky lighting, which directs the light onto the ground instead of into the neighbors.
Yeah, so, thank you. Um, those aren't, I mean, they're on our building. I just noticed those the other night and I mentioned my partner who's actually sitting next to me. It's Aaron Romancic. He's right next to me. Um, I just mentioned them to him. Those are, um, we didn't install those.
Of course, no, they're, they're from the existing, you know, they've always.
Oh, yeah. And I just, I just actually noticed them. I mean, meaning like I didn't know they were there even. Um, I was just there the other night and I did notice them and I just mentioned to Aaron. I'm like, wow, those lights are kind of bright. I'm sure the people who live right behind it, I don't know if those, those, if that new building behind us occupied it. And they said, okay, I'm sure that they're not going to enjoy those lights. So those lights can be moved, changed. I, I don't.
I, I don't think you need to move them. I think you just need to change them to night sky, um, compliant lighting. And it's, it, it's not a big issue, but it should be possibly part, you know, with, when you're doing the scope of work in the existing building, just change those out. And that, and we'll make that a condition. Um, do we, do we want to make the dumpster location a condition also or? Um.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I, from what you said, I'm satisfied about the noise. Um, and I think it would, we'd be more careful if you were a boarding facility, but you're not. Um, so any other questions from the board and/or any, uh, attendee on Zoom?
Uh, so, so Jeff, with what you just said there, I, you know, I think we ought to make the approval, you know, you mentioned about the lights and the, and the dumpster. I think we should make it explicit about the usage is as the cancer care center without boarding or doggy daycare. Uh, because those are constant to, to me, a change of, a significant change of use, which may have additional parameters that we would want to specify.
That's fine. Now Deb, what are your hours of operation typically?
Um, currently our hours are five thirty to, excuse me, eight thirty to five thirty, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, closed on Wednesdays. Those are our current hours. Um, we would be open on Wednesdays once we moved.
But you, but it's basic, basic office hours.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No overnight care. No, like you said, there's no boarding, no overnight, we don't have overnight patients.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, so I think, um, Maran, how do you suggest we dispose of this? Uh, can I get a motion that the planning board approve the site plan for 531 King Street uh, in accordance with the reference plan and with the aforementioned conditions?
Yeah, the conditions for, um, the, the security lighting, the dumpster location, um, the, and the use and the general hours of operation.
Right.
No, no further than, um, eight AM to, what, seven thirty PM, five PM?
Uh.
Or do you?
I don't think we need to specify it. Um, I mean, we do have a noise by law that specifies hours. So if there's a complaint, it would go under that. Um, can I hear a second?
A second.
Daryl, pardon?
Did Daryl move?
Daryl moved. Well, can I hear a motion? Daryl, will you mo- move?
Yes, I move the motion as, uh, as stated.
I'll second it.
Bartlett, second. Uh, Bartlett?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, Deb, I'm more or less a neighbor of yours and I wish you luck.
Oh, thank you. Nice, nice to meet, nice to meet all of you.
Welcome to our town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glad to be there.
Okay, the next item is the, um, Proposed Zoning Bylaw Amendment to Further Its Restrict Adult Use Marijuana Cultivation and Clarify Odor Control Require. That was very, what?
So Donna Brewer, Town Council, is, is joining us as panelist now.
Okay, so the wrinkle. Uh, there's always a wrinkle with this.
Oh, well, yes, there was a wrinkle and there was a, uh, snow cancellation of a public hearing.
Right. So we are, we will, we will, we're going forward with the public hearing next month.
Well, if the board so votes, the schedule.
So we're here to discuss tonight whether to, to bring this forward to a further public hearing that modifies, um, the, uh, the proposed bylaw based on the concerns of the municipal law, um, review. I guess that was what it would be. Um, so I, I don't know if you guys have had a chance, but I looked at the, uh, proposed bylaw. It is blessedly brief uh, compared to the last one we did. So we've done really most of the hard work in terms of bylaw, um, revision. Do I have any, uh, and, well, so let's have, let's promote our council to give a little presentation. Hi, hi Donna. A little presentation about, uh, in general, which I think we're all familiar with, but specifically what the latest wrinkle was.
So good evening, everybody. It's nice to join you. Uh, yeah, I have good news about the little wrinkle. So the little wrinkle was whether we could prohibit micro businesses from being cultivators. We'd allow micro businesses, but that would be, uh, a condition is that they could not be cultivators. And at the first pass, the municipal law unit of the Attorney General's Office that reviews and approves or disapproves bylaws was uncertain whether that was consistent with, um, with the general laws. And I'm happy to report that, um, further consideration within their office, they believe that it would be permitted. So if that is a change that you would like to adopt in the bylaws, uh, the MLU, the municipal law unit will support that change.
So then we would be, uh, promoting the original draft bylaw versus the changed one?
So, yes, so as I understand it, you still want to do some prohibition.
Yes.
So there still would be need to, there would need to be a ballot question.
Yes.
But you would not need to have on the ballot a question about prohibiting, uh, cultivation among micro businesses. So yes, it would be the original one, not the amended one.
Okay. Um, board, uh, let's, uh, have comments. Bartlett, do you have any comments?
Um, not on the bylaw, no. I just have a question about the map, but that, we can deal with that later.
Anna?
Uh, no, I, I kind of figured that's what the issue was. Um, and so knowing that the alternate version is not the one we're going to use, then we're good.
Daryl?
Yeah, I, I, I think I lost part of the conversation there. What, you know, I'm, I'm good with what was in the thing here about the draft, which was the thing there, the, the twist. We don't have text that talks about the twist here, right, in terms of.
Well, we did, we did have a posted draft bylaw that addressed the twist that was prepared after the first draft bylaw. Is that correct? And so we are now going to promote the first, the, the original draft.
Which is full prohibit, right? Yeah, okay, that's, that, because I didn't see anything that had a draft that had the, that other change that you're referencing in it.
Um, okay.
Anyway, I, I'm, I'm, I'm more on board with the way we had it for the, the whole prohibition, uh, piece there and, and not, not going down the twist or turn path or whatever. Uh, there, I think it makes it a little bit more complicated than, than it needs to be. I, I, I read the two draft articles. They, they read pretty simply and, and, uh, can, you know, concise, uh, there. And I, I think that's our best chance of moving forward if we can move forward with this.
Um, I do want to mention the town council's letter, which wants us to wrap this up at the next meeting, essentially. The, ma- March 29th was the deadline.
Um, right, the last, um, uh, potential for the select board to vote to, on a ballot question is their meeting of March twenty-four, twenty. And so the planning board's public hearing on March 13th, um, could make that happen.
So okay, we'll have an agenda item, March 13th. I think we're all up to speed. And, uh, we'll then work with the selectmen to get a ballot question. It, it'll be up to them. Um, And uh we'll then work with the selectmen to get a ballot question. It it'll be up to them. Um, so.
I agree on timing. Um, the one thing that I was going to mention is can we have a? Backup plan, for example, if there's another winter storm on March thirteenth that delays us, um. Can the meeting automatically be moved to Zoom the same day, just because of weather circumstances? Um.
Mm hmm.
Just as a backup.
Um, yes, there there is a way that we can post for. Remote if necessary.
So let's do that for the March thirteenth meeting.
But then we would have to also include that in the public hearing notice.
Which have we, well, that's what I mean. So when we do the public hearing notice, let's mention that.
Yep.
Okay, uh, thank you, Donna.
Sure, no problem.
Appreciate all your efforts. Um. The next.
So you just um both to schedule the public hearing.
Okay, so we need to both to schedule the public hearing for March thirteenth. Um, do I have a motion?
I moved.
Second?
Second.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we'll have that uh on, do we have a time, do you think, we can do yet?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay. Um. Informal discussion. Flood plane bylaw and map update. So we have a current draft of a bylaw. Um, we do have a timeline that we. Would like to push this forward. Um, we do have. A lot of GIS information. Which. I've been. Sort of accessing and.
Mm hmm.
While. Uh, I have a very powerful graphics uh card and it still takes a while to load. Um. Anyway. So. On the draft that we have um. Been, or we are working with, we have comments. Could you tell me who were the commenters?
Okay, um, so. Jenny Merrill, Town Council Jenny Merrill, um, asked a lot of the questions. The responses were from Nadia Madden um at DCR, the floodplain specialist. And then I added a few um comments and notes. Um, mine show up as the MT.
Okay. Um, because I I was just curious, they were, yeah, some of them were legalistic, some of them were deep knowledge of FEMA. You know, lore and history. Um. My. Inclination is to. Um. These. Two commenters are much more. Uh, knowledgeable about these issues than I am, but uh do we have any other comments?
I had, yeah, I had one and I forwarded to Maran. There was a cup, I think, I'm trying to. I thought I had everything open for the meeting tonight and I'm now pondering to find that bylaw. Uh, there, there was a couple of, a couple of places in the text that said the town will. Uh, like issue orders or or something like that. It was page nine, such whatever in the in the email I sent there. I don't think it should be the town. We should specify which. Either board committee, appointed official, or whoever is the one that would do. The note, findings and notifications there, uh, because I don't think the town is an entity that uh that basically says anybody in town government could issue or.
There are apparently some things the town can do and some things only FEMA can do.
And but it should be, it it should be either the, is it the planning board? Is it the building?
Board of Appeals, I think they specify.
The Board of Appeals. It should be specific, not just the town.
Right, and I I really appreciate that comment because we should be more clear about in the draft about. Um, the the things that the floodplain administrator can do. And then those things that the zoning board of appeals can do and the follow up that is needed in both of those cases.
Yes, and then one, one other question would be since um. Some authorities are given to the zoning board of appeals, are they reviewing the bylaw also to ensure that there's compatibility with what they feel is within their scope or? Concerns about their scope?
Um, I'll I'll send it to the chair and vice chair, um, but it's not dissimilar from their duties now under the current bylaw.
It was maybe, it might just be a courtesy to to have them confirm that they they're aware of these. You know, authorities being granted to them.
Yep. Thank you.
That was, that was all I had for comments.
Yeah, you're talking, I think it's, a lot of this is on page six and and the comment is ninety percent of floodplain regulations. Are in the state building code, so they recommend designating the building commissioner as the floodplain administrator. I concur. Um. And then. There were comments about whether to make. Uh, permits in the floodplain, a special permit or just part of the building permit. Um. I. Okay. I would say that in our town, I think it could be just part of a building permit. We do not have coastal waters, we don't have um floodways. Um. But that's. My take on it.
Mm hmm. So right now, the way it's set up is it is an application uh on form to to. The. Building Commissioner.
Okay.
And if it meets all of the regulations outlined in the. Bylaw, the requirements outlined in the bylaw, like no impact to flood elevations, et cetera, then um. Floodplain Administrator or. Building Commissioner can issue that approval. If, however, they're looking for a variance from the. Requirements from the regulations, then they would have to apply to the zoning board of appeals. And it outlines those conditions under which the zoning board of appeals could issue a special permit. There's also a. Section that FEMA asks to have in there that if um there's an appeal to the state building code. Um, floodplain regulations, that that application has to go to um the state building code um.
Right.
Authority. So.
So the process would be if you were building, applying for a permit. Or building in. A FEMA regulated area. Um. For the most part, so for the most part, the building commissioner would deal with it. And then it's only if the owner, if it's denied and the owner requests a variance, then it would go. Um.
To the ZBA only, only at that point.
Okay.
Wow, the way that you just explained it is how it should be written.
Yeah, and I I I do, don't think it quite tells that story very well yet. It's like a.
So, but. Daryl, the point about. Uh. Roping in the ZBA on this is a good one, and in general, I would say they're looking for work. They're a little miffed that they don't have a lot of things coming their way. Although this particular issue, you know. Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at more as as just a uh, you know, a professional courtesy since we're referencing tasking for them.
Sure.
Assignments, you know, the professional courtesy is to to get the.
No, it's a, it's a good point.
Uh, there, and I suspect that the two comment, the two, the towns I was referring to in. In section D and D one, it's probably needs to be just, if I think we're referring to the ZBA. Uh, in that case, would be the one that would be the town representative on that. Uh, piece, because since it's under this, hold on, under the ZBA section. But I don't know that.
So tonight we want to um. Vote to bring this forward. To a hearing. Next meeting. Do I have a motion?
Well, before we do that, I do have a couple of things.
Sure.
So. In in. Reading this, there are a couple of items. So for example, under the definition. Uh, number four, which is. Functionally dependent use, a use which cannot perform its intended purpose unless it's located or carried out in close proximity to water. Term includes only docking facilities, port facilities. I'm just looking at this for brevity and thinking. If we don't really have water like that, should we even include it? So that's just a question. Um.
Yep, um, and we asked that question or a similar question of the um. DCR uh of the floodplain um representative, and she said that these are all FEMA. Definitions and they should stay as is in in the proposed bylaw. I mean, it covers several pages of the proposal, proposed bylaw, but she recommended that it stay in as as is.
Thank you. So then the second one that I have is actually one requesting to be defined. The term water course is. Sprinkled throughout the document, the the draft bylaw. But the term water course isn't defined.
Mm hmm.
And it's to you so often, I'm just wondering if we can add a definition about that.
Mm hmm.
So. Uh, Maran, you you have notes, um, you can prepare a. Clean. Document.
Mm hmm.
And uh, can we bring this for, can we vote to bring this forward? Can I have a motion to bring this forward to our March thirteenth hearing?
Oh, moved.
Second? Thank you. Uh, Bartlett?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, um. This is yours. Okay, next, um, informal discussion, accessory dwelling. Unit bylaw update. We want to, I'd love to give, I'd love to get your uh. Take on the survey that was done. And then we need to plan a a timeline for. Hearings and bringing it for, and when and if, well, we, it's not an if, but when we bring it forward. So, uh. Does anyone have comments on the survey?
Um. I I think um. My general comment is. I want to separate the discussion about the ADU aspects from the. Um. Short term rental, because I got the impression that there's not a lot, we don't have a lot of short term rentals. So do we need to spend a lot of effort on it right now until, maybe perhaps wait till it becomes more of an issue? But I have it separated from the ADU piece because. ADUs are addressing, meant to address our long term housing issues, not short term rentals. So. You know, when we talk about.
No, I.
Talk about limitations on those, but I'm not necessarily based on the survey. It doesn't seem that. Short term rentals are burning issue in the town. My interpretation.
I I was. Sort of surprised at the response. The number. Of responses. Uh, I don't. I think it did indicate it's not a burning issue. I think you are correct that it's not necessary to be. Part of the ADU. Um. You know, in talking about it with various people, we. We do have short term rentals in town, apparently. In a modest amount. Um. And. But. From a bylaw point of view, they're not a lot. We have no provision for them in our bylaws. So in the future. It. Maybe, and and it may not be us, it may just be uh. You know, general town bylaw. Uh, that needs to be um. You know, addressed. I agree with you, Daryl. It doesn't need to be part of the ADU. The reason why. It's linked is because it's perceived that short term rentals remove housing. From. The use by. You know, families. And in some communities, it's been pretty devastating. Uh, but as we've seen from the short term rental, you know, the survey and uh, you know, the way things are working now, it's not. Now a pressing. Issue. Um. So. That said. Um, let's talk about the. Pushing forward on an ADU bylaw. Maran, can I get a? Um. A determine, you know, or your opinion on whether this is a Maytown meeting or a Falltown meeting?
Um, thank you for asking. Um, at the moment, we're still waiting for um the state's model bylaw. They don't have one yet. Um. We know that there are portions of our accessory apartment bylaw. Um, small portions that are, we can't enforce because it's um, units would. Be by right instead of requiring a special permit, um, but that's not a hard workaround to deal with on on the short term. Um, I would recommend that since we don't have a draft ready to go now, that we. Have, you know, take the time to have a thoughtful discussion and do this for next year.
Okay, uh, we we're, we're not uh compelled. By the state to.
To do anything.
Done it. And I would view that if the state can't gives, give us guidance. I don't know how they could enforce it.
Hmm.
Okay, yeah, you know, um.
Right, um, HLC has has noted that the state is not going to be doing any enforcement. Um. The enforcement piece is on our end, um zoning enforcement side of it. Um.
So we can continue to enforce our current zoning regarding ADUs without state interference until?
Well, without. Ha- having to require a special permit. It's by right, not by special permit.
Okay, but what about the owner occupancy?
Um, you can't enforce that.
Okay, so in general. The state's, you know, regime is, you know, it's existing. It's just not codified in our bylaw.
Correct. It it's right, the. It's not gonna end up a lot. My guess is it's not gonna end up a lot different. The local zoning bylaw is not gonna end up a lot different, but we'll need some changes to.
Well, the 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 changes are big, the lack of, the the not owner occupied is a big thing. And uh, you know, the other thing that we have. Um. Sort of purview over size, which are presently our size is larger than the state. In the state's minimum. Um. So. You know. You say not.
It's it's all a point.
I mean, I guess, I guess if we had a model bylaw we could look at, we could push this forward, but we don't, so um.
So based off what you said, it sounds like spring twenty twenty six then.
What I I I think we need to be um a little flexible in the sense that if. And from my point of view, this could happen, if there is a flurry of applications for essentially two family homes in Littleton. Uh, it might get people. Um, interested in, you know, having a solid bylaw. Um, so that's all.
I I would say the flexibility I look for is, is if the state did come out, you know, I would say it's. We're we're not realistic, even if it came out tomorrow to make spring town meeting.
Right.
If it came out soon, we might be able to make Falltown meeting. Uh, you know, uh, type of thing there. That that I would just be thinking that kind of flexibility. Which town meeting would we schedule it based on when?
Well, that's why I'm saying let's be flexible and consider Falltown meeting if we need to. Um, so. One of the board business things that I didn't highlight was the CPTC citizen training, um. The big uh extravaganza at Holy Cross in a couple of weeks. And they do have a. Uh, and I was thinking of attending just for the ADU, the state ADU, um. They're gonna have a person from HLC there. But if they don't have a model bylaw by then, I think it's sort of a waste of time. I I'm um. But I would, I I would encourage you all to look at, you know, today, um. Uh. It's very well run. Maran is apparently on the board of it. Um, I've attended them before. Um, and uh. First of all, it's pretty exciting because it's all people like us, people who aren't professionals that are on town boards. And uh, looking at at, you know, very um. Basic things, so. So look that over, um. I. It probably will sign up. Or the ADU, I mean, you sign up for the whole day, but and there's reimbursement if you want to be reimbursed.
Um, and actually, we can um now do it the other way. If you sign up, you can check off this thing that says we will send a check later. And just send me um. And just send me um your uh registration and the town can cut a check for it. Um, so my plug for it, oh, at Holy Cross, the food is usually pretty good, um, and uh, the. Town does receive um a small discount on our um insurance if uh for. It's, you know, a lot of board members attend um training, and this CPTC training does qualify for that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're clearly, you know, the the breakouts are, some of them don't apply to us, some of them are mainly for Board of Appeals. Or some, you know, or conservation or whatever, but there are some that apply to us, this year, the ADU is one of those, so.
I plan on going, I just haven't done the.
I I I haven't either, but um I I I would, uh, you know, it'd be great to see. Some or all of you there, um. Item number six. Planning Department updates, Maran, you're on.
Okay, um, so I I had written all the updates um on the agenda cover page um for um. This item, um. Uh, let's see, wanted to highlight the hundred and twenty thousand dollar um. Housing work or not, the, yes. Housing grant that was awarded, um, the Affordable Housing Trust is working with Elder and Human Services. And the um Building Department um to get that off the ground, it's a small grant program for homeowners. Um, to help with critical repairs and um, um.
Aging.
Age aging community, um, and applicants households will be um income qualified um through uh EHS. And there's a whole process outlined and we're already, um, EHS is already seeing interest in in applications. Very excited about that, um, the next round of Community One Stop Grants has opened, um, and so I'm doing some research on. Um, if there are any community initiatives that we've talked about that match any of the grant programs. Um, so the application deadline is June fourth, so I get to spend quality time on that uh probably the the spring. Uh, we got an update, official update from HLC that our subsidized housing inventory now includes the two units. At uh Hager Homestead. Uh, peer review contract, the select board uh did vote um for the new three year peer review contract. From Green International, um, and budget process, FY twenty six budget process is underway. Um, it looks like um, we have requested funding and so far includes funding for the um. Existing staff levels, staffing levels for for planning. All good.
Um. Prior, that brings us to the end of our agenda, prior to adjournment, is there, are there anyone, any more comments? That people would like to make? And if not, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second?
Bartlett?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and I want to extend my total apologies for my uh miss on joining the Zoom meeting. Um, in the future, this is really convenient for me.
There you go.
Thank you for the suggestion, Anna.